Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Merrimack School District School Board Meeting for December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start, as we often do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. All right. So before we begin with public participation, just want to acknowledge that Board Member Peters is excused from tonight's meeting. And we will start our meeting, as we always do, with public participation. If you'd like to come and speak to the mic, come to the mic and speak. Please state your name and your address for the record, and if you are a student, there is no need to state your address, just your name. So the microphone is open. Seeing none. We shall move on to the first of many budget presentations over the next several months. Tonight, we will be hearing from the Food Service Department and our elementary schools, including Mastercola, Reed's Ferry, Thornton's Ferry, and James Mastercola Upper Elementary tonight. And we're going to kick things off with our food service presentation. So we will invite our food service administrator to the microphone.
Dave, do you mind if I give a little bit of a?
Ken, do you mind if I give a little? Absolutely not.
Yeah, thank you. Dave's been our food service director for how many years now, Dave?
Going on thirty.
Going on thirty years. He was a young man when he first joined us, and he still is. Food Service is a special revenue fund. The money it takes in pays for the program. He doesn't have an impact upon the tax rate whatsoever. So this is a because we have to budget gross, we have to budget all of our expenditures. You know, in years past, people would just forget about the food service program and not budget for it because it was an in and out in an attempt to artificially deflate their budget, but that's not proper accounting. So Dave's budget is in the last-worn article that everybody puts together. And right now, he's sitting on probably because of the COVID money coming for from free and reduced or free meals, free meals for everybody, he's sitting on a nice surplus. So what you do with that surplus is you have to spend it for the program. I can't take the surplus and transfer it to the general fund to use it for another purpose. Or they'll put me in some nice bracelets. I don't want that. I don't look good in orange. I'm not planning on being in orange. So Dave has a nice surplus. He runs a great program. During the COVID era, he was out there serving lunch with people. He was working like a dog out there. You know, we had some volunteers who came, but mostly it was Dave. So I just want to kind of start the ball rolling, tell us, tell everybody how much we appreciate him. And David, the floor is yours, my gentle, my sir.
Thank you, Matt. I'd like to present the budget for the six schools in the district. First of all, I would like to say that if it wasn't for the staff that we had, again, couldn't, I couldn't say enough about the people that were dedicated to serving the students every day. Sometimes in the rain and the wind blowing over the things and stuff, but excellent, excellent people I work with. First of all, the, the, Matt gave you a description of the food service. We do receive federal funds for free and reduced meals, which are available to anybody that wants to fill out the application. We do, we do have to approve them by certain income guidelines, so not everybody that applies will receive it. We also receive federal funding for each meal served, even if it's a paid meal, even if it's a small amount, we do get some funding back. And we do receive federal funds in the form of surplus foods from the USDA. And the surplus foods, this year is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of free food, but we do have to inventory it and use it towards the development of school meals. And we're also able to use at least, at the most fifty percent of that in fresh fruit and vegetables. So that's been a great program. I can't say enough about receiving, you know, fresh fruit and vegetables every week. We were primarily getting canned goods and frozen goods prior to that. And, but the fresh fruit and vegetables is excellent. Kids, kids really like it. That being said, we do also belong to the New Hampshire Buy-In Group. And I think it's expanded to sixty schools now, a school district, not schools. The thing about that is it's a great network. We do get better buys on groceries. We're able to work with Tim Goosens, who's in Laconia. He's a director in Laconia. And he does an awesome job keeping us informed on all the, you know, the bid processes and stuff like that for the food. And keeping us up to date on any of the nutrition, nutrition that we need to provide the schools. So again, that's, that's a great, a great asset to have Tim from Laconia doing that. The thing that, you know, probably stands out the most in this budget is the equipment replacement. We had, and what we expended last year is a little bit, I think Ken had a question on the expended part last year, which was forty-one thousand plus. We originally had just put in for some replacement warmers in the two elementary schools, which we did get. And they came in about twenty-five hundred dollars below budget. So that was nice, but beginning of the school year, I had some issues with my biggest freezer, which is where my surplus USDA commodity foods go. And my repairman said, "The compressor on top of that box, the box is a huge, huge freezer, is starting to collapse the roof." So we can do a couple of things. We can take that compressor off and move it to another side. Or you're still going to have some leakage and you're not going to get the best, the best frozen, you know, product that you need. So we made a decision to get a bid on that, and I went to Matt and I said, you know, this is our chance to do this. We have a little bit of surplus and let's, let's try to, you know, get this freezer in place. And it wasn't easy. It wasn't an easy process, but we, we did it.
Was that the one with the base?
Yeah, yeah, that's a long story.
Yeah, go ahead. Tell them about the base. So it's kind of like, once, once you start a project, you think it's going to be easy, and then this happens. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, and it's, it's, it's a, it's really a sad story too, because the refrigeration guy that gave me the quote ended up passing away in April. Which, you know, the project was supposed to go in April vacation. So when he ended up in the hospital in February, he had his backup people coming in, and they had no clue what they were looking at because they've never serviced our, our account before. So they came in, they took a look at it and said, okay, yeah, we should be able to do this. We ordered the box to come in. It was delivered to MES, outside MES. And they went in, they said, "We should be able to rip the old freezer out and put the new box in by today," or tomorrow, maybe at the latest. I'm like, "Okay, that sounds great. Let's go for it." And when they pulled the box out, they found out that there was a subfloor below that freezer, which we didn't know. But the subfloor was this much lower than the entryway. So we had to make a decision.
And it was made out of wood.
Yeah, so that was, that was torn out. That was gone. So now we had a big, you know, crater. And we had to decide how we were going to fill that in. So Matt was able to get a contact, and the guy came in and they put a subfloor of block down.
If I may, and of course, we like to joke about this. If something bad's going to happen, it's going to happen when Tom Tussaud decides to take a vacation. The rare times that Tom Tussaud is out, all of a sudden Dave says, "I got a rotten floor. There's a four-inch drop." What do I do? You know, so I just want to thank.
Yeah, I forgot Tom was on vacation.
Tom's on vacation, of course he is. And so he never goes on vacation, only in these instances where it really matters. So and so I called up Mike Isabelle, who's the owner of Complete Masonry, who did the bat. He did the brick on the J Mews. He's also a Merrimack resident. He went through Reed's Ferry Elementary School, and the guy's solid. So he came in and he took care of us in a flash. So that was a good, it's good to form relationships amongst the various contractors that you know in town because you, you trust them. And they come to your aid when you need it. So.
To make a long story short, we got the subfloor in, they put the new freezer in place. And, you know, within a couple of weeks, I had to, I had to juggle a few things. I had to delay a couple of deliveries that were coming because they come once a month. And surplus in Concord was nice enough to hold back on, you know, dropping more frozen goods on me. But, you know, we did, we did get it accomplished, and I think it was just a, it's a beautiful freezer. I got more room in there now, which is great, and I have lighting in there now because the old freezer only had one light bulb at the end. And I had to use my phone a lot of times to see, you know, what was in there. So this has got LED lighting all the way down the side, and it's beautiful. But that was one of my best accomplishments last year, even though it was painful. So in the same respect, for next year, we're looking to replace some ovens. And the ovens, the upper elementary ovens are, I think my repair guy said, "It looks like it might have been a prototype to a convention oven." Because it's been there. I mean, it used to be probably what, the high school, when it was the high school?
Yeah, yeah, because that, that area used to be the high school years ago, those of you who are.
So, but you got to say, they lasted a long time. So but he's been in there repairing, you know, putting them back together, replacing something, and then he's like, "You're not going to be able to get these parts very much longer, and so you might want to make a move." And then in the same respect, the middle school, even though they're newer, the quality wasn't as good, and they've been breaking down more frequently than the high schools.
Everybody knows the newer equipment does not last like the older stuff.
Yeah.
My mother-in-law had a dryer that was forty years old, and it's still going.
Oh, yeah, I hear you. So that's why I put that in the budget, and I've been working with a couple of people. I gave you some quotes on it, and they've heard solid quotes. The good part about that is I'm going to be putting it out to bid to have the old equipment pulled out and disposed of so that we don't have, you know, stuff, stuff in the landfill or in the back corner. But I think that's the proper move to do and try to get those new ovens in place for next year. So and I, and I think if I want to move on to one more question that Ken had, I think it was in regards to food service improvement and development. That number, the fourteen hundred dollars, has been in there for a number of years, and it's in there because if I, if I do want to take a conference that might be out of state, it's, it's put in there purposely for that. I've been lucky enough to be on the board for the, for the New Hampshire School Nutrition Association. So they have paid a lot of those conferences for me, which saves the district money, which is great. But I'd, I'd say I just assume keep that in there.
You may not always be on the board.
Well, I was, I was not going to be on the board this year, but the person that was going to take my place moved to Massachusetts. Cannot be on the New Hampshire Board anymore. So I agreed to do it one more year with them. So I'll be going to Washington in March to talk to the legislators about school nutrition. Again, this is, I think, the fourteenth or fifteenth year doing that. So it's been awesome. That's the best part. And Naomi had a couple of questions. I think Matt kind of took that last one and explained it pretty well about the ins and outs of the school food service. As far as how many lunches we serve, I did a quick kind of mathematical thing. It's probably like two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand to three-hundred-thousand a year. And that includes just the main lunches. There's a lot of other stuff that we do sell to students that they, they enjoy every day. And as far as the food budget, the food numbers for budget, I think it's pretty good. Some of the, you know, I put it a little bit higher just in case. We have a, nothing's really come down a lot, but I just got an email from Tim from Laconia, who's, who's in charge of the bid. And I think he said they had forty items that they had to reassess because of, you know, conditions. But of the forty, more than half had gone down. The other half had gone up a little bit. So he said it's pretty much a wash, but it's still kind of unstable out there as to what's happening. So you never, you never can tell. And we, you know, it goes, it goes from everything from, it was a chocolate milk shortage in hood for like three weeks. And we don't have hood, thank goodness, because we had a, you know, craziness. But you never know what's going to happen with that stuff. And I think as far as the ovens go, I think it's beneficial to get them done. And hopefully, they'll be better than the last ones. I think that's all I have as far as the questions go. Do you have any other questions for the budget?
I have a follow-up to one of mine.
Sure.
The, the new ovens that you're going to replace them with, do they have like a warranty or do you not even that far yet? Like, I'm curious how long?
Yeah, they'll have, they'll have a warranty. Usually the three to five years, depending on what, what we agree with. And, you know, the person that, the guy that repairs my ovens says he's had the best luck with the ones that I'm going to put out the bid. So that's, that's the main, the main thing. He's, he's got the experience of fixing, and he knows which ones he doesn't fix very much. So, yeah.
And, and how old approximately do you think those, the ones you're replacing are, give or take?
Well, the middle school, they're what, sixteen, seventeen years?
Middle school was built twenty years ago, Dave.
Twenty, already?
Yeah.
All right, so twenty, so the upper L probably is sixty years old. They're probably.
Close to sixty, you say?
At least, yeah. Yeah, those are blodged ovens, and they're solid. We tried to move, move, they're two stacked here. So there's two ovens together, and we had a problem with the breaker switch, and we tried to move the two ovens one day, me and Tom Tussaud. He was there.
He was there. He was there. Tom was there.
And between the two of us, you know, we, we were able to just barely get them apart so that we could get to the outlet in the back. And then when we tried to put them back, the guy from Custom Electric said, "Just get out of my way." He shoved them back by himself. I'm like, "All right, I'm out of here."
Yeah.
But, yeah, probably sixty years old.
Can I ask you a quick question? Dave, about twenty to twenty-five years ago, government commodities, we used to be able to procure government commodities for about ten cents on the dollar. Do you know what that ratio is right about now?
I couldn't tell you what it is right now.
Because they, they are, you know, government commodities are extraordinarily important, have been for years, for the financial viability of, of all food service programs.
I mean, I, I get the hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars worth of food, and you know, we get ground beef, we get diced chicken, we get chicken strips, we get egg patties. We get everything that's usable for production of the school meal. So it's a vital, important aspect.
Yeah, I would venture to guess that at this point in time, that hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars probably buys you a market value, probably a half a million dollars worth of commodities.
Yeah, absolutely, probably.
And it's good stuff. It's not like it was in the old days, where you get the, the frozen four-by-four block of chicken.
The quality has improved significantly.
We used to get, we used to get the ham in a can with the, the metal key to open it. You know, scary. It's, it's come a long way. They've done, they've done a great job as far as providing us with the, the proper nutritious foods, and they, they have cut back on some of the canned goods, the lower sodiums, less sugar and stuff like that, and some of the fruits. But I, again, I think the fresh fruit program is, is by far the best thing that they've done in a long time. So.
I just, I say this every year. It's my fourth year. Just really appreciate the food service. You know, the people that serve the lunches for those kids. Sometimes it's just the big smile. It's, it's the highlight of their day. And we're really grateful for the people that we have working in the Merrimack School District.
I appreciate that. And people, you know, I see people, not people, I see kids outside the dish, outside the schools, and they recognize me and they're like, "I know you." And I'm like, yeah, because I come in every morning and I help do the breakfast for the high school students, and we, we get a great rapport with those, with those kids that come in and get breakfast every day. So it's been good.
And you're in what, about five o'clock every morning?
Yeah, five fifteen or so, just. Takes me about a half an hour to roll everything out of the back room.
Any other questions for Dave?
Yeah.
Awesome. Very good. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Great job, Dave.
Thank you.
Ken, may I just say to you and the board in, just prior to the elementary principals coming up, some of your questions from everyone regarded increases in appropriations, particularly for supplies. We did put together some information from the Federal Reserve Board and the Bureau of Labor Statistics. We've given you graphical representations of what has happened to pricing in educational books, supplies, institutional furnishings, insurances, which impact a lot of what we do, and also transportation services, which, as you know, are dependent upon salaries, equipment, fuel, and insurances. So this is, so I think graphical, visual representation is always helpful for us to also share with the public about what it, what it means to us in terms of the dollars that we need to budget to maintain the, a commensurate purchasing value for each dollar appropriated to us. And so it's, we can probably use this in Budget Committee and with the public, just to indicate whatever they are experiencing at home, we are experiencing here, and sometimes in even a greater magnitude.
I'm really glad you handed this out because this answered about eighty percent of my questions alone. You know, even just looking at the spike in the last year is pretty crazy to see. So I very much appreciate that. And I think this is something that should be available everywhere anytime we're talking about budget, because this explains a lot, for sure.
Hey, Bill, if you, if you think it appropriate, if you could give me some, if, I don't know if you have those in electronic format, or I could just scan them. I think it'd be kind of good to post on the, the website, on the budget section.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we appropriately cite the sources also so that people know.
Yes.
There's a degree of credibility behind this data.
You know how to do the citations, right?
And just while we're talking about supplies, just overarching across everybody, you know, I had some people say to me, some new teachers in the district say to me that, you know, of course, they love being in Merrimack, but they noticed the difference between the supplies they get elsewhere and the supplies they get here. So a lot of other districts will supply everything. Our community is really good about sending things in, you know, every, everything. Obviously, you know, we don't, we supply tissues and, you know, those things, but there are some things that we don't supply every single classroom, whatever. So we really keep it lean on supplies in general. You know, we could do that a lot of different ways, but that's not, not something we've put into the budget, and that helps to keep costs low. And we appreciate the community stepping up and helping in multitude of ways to provide those supplies. I mean, obviously, we have critical supplies, but, you know, it's, it's certain extras and stuff.
Yeah, and I think that's one thing too, because we talked about this in the fall. That's one thing too, that sometimes we get confused about what supplies mean, right? Supplies, as far as budgetary conversations go, are like essentials to go about a normal school day or a normal school year. As much as we want like the really cool poster on the wall and stuff like that, that would be stuff that's not necessarily budgeted for. So just so folks at home know what we're talking about. And when you see those emails and letters go home in the fall, these, you know, we, we supply things like pencils and pens and paper and all that stuff, all of which have gone up quite a bit. So.
And may I, may I say also, generally, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but in addition to what parents send in, we know that for years, teachers have spent hundreds and hundreds of dollars out of their own pocket every year, and just want to state how much we absolutely appreciate that.
Bought stuff for my kids yesterday. All right, how do we want to present? Are we all coming up at once? All right, come on down, everybody. I think all the microphones are working. And so we are, while they're getting set up, so the folks at home know, tonight, we are going to be hearing budget presentations from Mastercola Elementary, Reed's Ferry Elementary, Thornton's Ferry Elementary, and James Mastercola Upper Elementary School. So as we go through the different schools presenting their different budget proposals, I would just ask that you introduce yourself so the folks at home can know who you are. And as you're going through the questions, feel free to just read them. Yeah, just read them down as they're written. And although, as I said, most of mine have been answered already. So who, who are we starting with tonight?
So, good evening, and thank you for inviting us here to present our overview of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. As we've done in other years, we usually have one spokesperson, which is me for the lower, lower elementaries. And with the questions, I've asked each of the different principals to answer the questions. There's some redundancy in questions, so we'll reference that. And say, for example, we'll respond to Board Member Rats House's questions. We see that there was a duplicate here, and we'll mention that as we respond to questions. I like to do just some quick introductions. Over here, we have Laura Livy, who's the Assistant Principal at Reed's Ferry School. I almost said Thornton's. Bonnie Paincho is the principal at Reed's Ferry School, Brooke Ross, the Assistant Principal of Thornton's Ferry, and Michelle Romaine, principal at MES, and Kathleen Ortega, principal at MES, and Meg Fowler, who is the Assistant Principal at James Mastercola Upper Elementary School. And Dr. Rowe is not feeling well, so Meg Fowler is amazing, and she's stepping in to do the presentation with all of our support for J Mews. So the elementary, I'll provide a quick overview, and then we'll get into the nitty-gritty with the questions. So the elementary budgets for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year continue to reflect the priorities established by the Merrimack School District and the Merrimack School Board. We continue to invest in all academic disciplines and co-curricular activities as well as ensuring the offerings across the three lower elementary schools are equitable. Some things to see in our budget. Additional teachers. In our budget, we are adding teachers based on actual enrollments in grades one through four and anticipated enrollments in kindergarten. And as you know, that's the big variable. We saw that increase last year at Reed's Ferry School. The increase in teachers also reflects the alignment of class sizes across all the three lower elementary schools. So for Reed's Ferry, we have two classroom teachers being added in grades one and three. MES, a classroom teacher added in kindergarten, and at Thornton's Ferry, one additional grade, second grade teacher. In addition to investing in more teachers, we continue to invest in early education, and I know Superintendent Olson has spoken to how much the investment in our youngest learners and how that pays off in terms of academic achievement. And we're adding kindergarten instructional assistants, one at Thornton's Ferry and one at MES to provide that continued investment in early education. Also, you'll see that we've added some positions this year that we have not filled, but they'll be in the budget for twenty-four and twenty-five. And that is something that Assistant Superintendent Amy Doyle has spoken to, and that is the growth we've seen with our ESL population, English as a Second Learner's population. We are looking to add an ESL teacher at Thornton's Ferry School. Right now, the ESL teacher splits between Reed's and Thornton's Ferry, and she presently has a caseload of forty-six students between each of the schools. We've seen a marked increase in the number of ESL students in our district, but in particular at these two schools. So we're looking to see if we can hire an additional ESL teacher, and that teacher would be at Thornton's Ferry School with Mrs. Clifford, who would stay at Reed's Ferry.
What was that caseload number again?
We have twenty, she has twenty-two students at. We have twenty, she has twenty two students at Thornton's and twenty four students at Reed's. And this has been a significant increase. We're thrilled again to offer our co-curricular activities for students to participate in after-school educator-led enrichment activities. And again, these are for two sessions, each for four weeks. The format has not changed in the last four years. We are excited because our our next session, our first session for the year is in January. And we are having sixty clubs ranging, and these are some of the clubs we've offered in the past, knitting, printmaking, floor hockey, pickleball, steam club, spoons and zooms, animation, time to give, bird watching, Art Tastic, basketball basketball club, and sign language. So we continue to offer a broad array of activities for our students. Due to the budget allocation, we limit the co-curricular offerings to twenty clubs per school, ten for the winter, and then ten for the spring. On average, we have fifteen students per club. That is a maximum of three hundred students. And I know Board Member Roth House, you asked this particular question, but we're excited to say about fifty percent of our students at Thornton's and MES and Reed's Ferry participate in these co-curricular activities. So that's really outstanding and has generated a lot of excitement at each of our schools. Try trying up for a club. And you, but the minute that it's available in ten seconds, I think most of the clubs are filled. So we're very excited. We continue to invest in facilities and learning spaces in our schools. Besides our investments in staff, our budget includes expenditures to improve our learning spaces for students. We're looking at an art room redesign at MES for about nine thousand five hundred dollars, new classroom furniture for teachers, and new gymnasium barrier dividers at RFS and TFS now with two PE teachers splitting a gymnasium. It can get very loud, so we're looking at some barriers for that. We're also looking to invest in additional privacy dividers for special ed classrooms at Reed's Ferry. And at Thornton's Ferry, we're looking to replace some very old, heavy third grade chairs for our third grade students and for our new classroom furniture at Thornton's Ferry. We had a lot of questions about music. And so over the years, we've seen an increase in the participation of students in elementary chorus. At Thornton's Ferry, sixty percent of our third and fourth grade students participate in chorus. This is an increase of thirty percent from two years ago. Reed's has seen a similar increase in participation of chorus, up from thirty percent to sixty two percent. The chorus performs throughout the school year during concerts, town meetings, and special assemblies. Our increase in the music supplies reflect this increased participation across all three schools. We're looking to invest in instruments such as drums, ukuleles, xylophones. TFS, RFS will invest in supplies for musical productions, chorus, and supplies for curriculum, including recorder. At MES, they're purchasing drums, similar to TFS. In addition, at MES, they've built a chorus to over one hundred students and have added integrated activities. This increase is to fund these activities and the curriculum. So chorus has been a growing element in our schools. We're really excited about the continued investment in a stellar music program that we have throughout the district. Curriculum. We are benefiting from a continued shift from balance to structured literacy. And to round out this shift, we are investing in a knowledge-building curriculum called Wit and Wisdom. Amy will speak to this a little bit later on as she'll answer some questions. You'll see in the replacement cost, the breakdown per school from a quote that that we received at the district level. And again, Amy will speak to Wit and Wisdom and what a knowledge-building curriculum is and how important it is for our students to have this knowledge-building curriculum, especially as it relates to reading content and reading comprehension. Police detail was another question. As you saw, there was an increase. And we increased this because more and more, as our schools are growing, we have major events at our school with all families attending. Everybody knows that there's great Merrimack spirit and a great parent community. And our events are very large, especially when it comes to the meet and greets, open house, curriculum nights, art shows, chorus concerts, family fun nights. And so for increased safety and traffic concerns, we are increasing the number of police details to go from one or two events to five at Reed's, four at Thornton's, and three at MES. There'll also be additional time to ask some further questions about that as we go through the questions. Supply accounts. This is something that Superintendent Olson just spoke to. We're obviously seeing an increase in supply accounts, especially in this inflationary environment for purchasing purchasing paper and supplies. We looked at our costs on a per-student basis and across all three lower elementary schools, we spend on average thirty eight dollars per student. These are just for basic classroom supplies, including paper, pencils, markers, crayons, just the basics. Our health supplies increased this year because we're looking at our safety backpacks. Every single teacher has a safety backpack that goes with them, whether they're moving in, whether they're moving within the school or if we have an evacuation that contains really critical medical supplies. So we're looking to replenish those supplies and replace some of our old supplies, things like flashlights. These are some of the key things and medical blankets that we're looking to replace in these safety backpacks. So we'd like to thank you for inviting us and we welcome any questions at this time. We're going to go into the questions that you have provided, but I didn't know if there was any general questions. At first, we're going to have Mrs. Fowler just give the budget overview for J Mews and then we'll go into the questions, if that's okay.
Thank you very much. The, whoops. The primary focus for the development of the twenty four twenty five budget for J Mews is to provide adequate supplies, equipment, and materials to implement the J Mews school programs. Factors that are significant in this year's budget include the purchase of new reading and writing materials that support structured literacy, the continuation of funds to support all content areas, the continuation of funds to support all unified arts classes, the continuation continuation of co-curricular funds to provide interested students with opportunities to participate in educator-led after-school enrichment activities. And that's it for us.
So at this time, we can go through the questions unless there's general questions before we go through those. Do you want us to go ahead and proceed?
Yeah.
Okay. So the first questions we received are from school member Roth House. And some of the questions she asked also are duplicates from Chairperson Martin, as well as from School Board Member Halter. So the first question is, Mrs. Romaine is going to answer regarding co-curricular budget items.
So the question asked was, tell me more about the elementary co-curricular budget items, what activities are being offered and what percent of students are participating? So Julie did answer it. So we had things like knitting, printmaking, steam. There was a Zoom club. This year, we already have some teachers who are doing friendship bracelets. There's diamond painting, just a variety of different things. Some design, some clubs were for kindergarten, for second through third and fourth grade. We left the teachers decide different grade levels as well as the the activities themselves. Kids participated in four sessions and we had two different sessions over the course of the school year.
So is it eighteen students the max that can participate?
So we've capped each club last year, not having, because last year was our first year, not having any idea what the participation rate would be or any of it. We capped each of the clubs at twelve students. So one educator, twelve students. If you had two people working together, you could have twenty four students. So, for example, we had a clay club that had two adults and a total of twenty four students. This year, the the, because the response was so great, the kids were amazing, we have upped it to fifteen students per educator and then up to thirty. The other really great thing about the co-curricular activities is it is open for educators that are on the MTA contract, but it is also open for educators who are on the Mesa contract. So everyone is invited as long as we stayed below, we'd ten, we just, we maxed it at ten clubs for each session for budgetary purposes.
Thank you.
Sure.
The next questions are concerning the gifted and talented students. And I'll read the question and I know Assistant Superintendent Doyle, you were planning on responding. And the question was, how are gifted and talented students identified? How long does it take to identify them? What does a personalized learning plan look like? And what enrichment activities are being offered? How do we measure the success of the program? And can students at all grade levels be added to the program once they're identified?
That's a lot. So if I go through and don't hit a hit a answer, you'll let me know. So last year, you know, we went through the process of really looking at the eligibility process that students went through. We kept it in the spring of second grade, but we transitioned from using one, two, three assessments to to one assessment in two parts. So we have adopted the cognitive abilities test, which has a screener for all students. And it is, it's produced by Riverside Publish Publishers. And if you take a look at what they have online, you can see that it's a tool that a lot of districts use for gifted and talented identification. So we really tried to use a tool and an assessment that was widely used. All students take the screener and then if a student scores at the ninetieth percentile or above, they're eligible to take the post screener. We had about, you know, sixty some students, I think, between all the lower elementary schools. And then from there, the eligibility was at the ninety fourth percentile or above. And because it was new this year, we did not use STAR as an eligibility piece, but we will be using iReady in the future. But when we were going through and identifying what students would be eligible for the pullout part of the gifted and talented, we did look at other students that had scored very well on that assessment. So I I feel like we have a very strong identification process now, one that is rooted in reliability and validity. Whereas before, we were using some outdated tools. We were using a an assessment that was in its second or third iteration and we were still using the first version of that. So as you know, when you look at norming samples and things like that, it's really important that you use the most up-to-date tool. So as far as that goes, yes, parents can, new students can be added at any time. The COGAT is a K to twelve assessment tool. So we just have to make sure that if a seventh grader comes in and wants to take the screening tool, we just have to have a license for that student. Right now, we do front-load a fair amount of second-grade licenses and third-grade licenses just because we had some kids that either went on a vacation, they were eligible for the screener, but then they didn't come back. You know, we had a couple of students that, you know, I'm not coming back, this is my last day of school and it was June. So we ended up doing some additional screening in the fall. That's also been great because we were able to hit the ground running, I think, a little sooner in GNT services with transitioning to this because we used to, get ready for this, send away our scores and then they would mail them back to us. Yes, that's what, your face is exactly what I was, like, why is that? So now they take the COGAT and you have your report by the end of the day. So we've.
Scantron machine.
Yeah, we did a screen, we were.
How many stamps does that take?
So so we've, we're in twenty twenty-three and I really feel like we're we're making headway. So how long does it take? Not long now, once we get the screening tool and the post-screening tool. We knew the students, the bulk of the students by the last day of school last year. Parents, a few parents have asked for their student to be re-screened. We've done that where there is a Form One, a Form A, and a Form B of the tool, we've done that. You know, and we can continue to offer, you know, those services and, you know, to be able to be responsive to the request of a parent. As far as eligibility goes with the programming, we have two gifted and talented teachers. Michaela Ryan works at MES and Muse, and then Nicole Diggins works at RFS and TFS, and they split their time, similar to the ESOL teachers that you heard a few minutes ago. They create their groups and it is dependent on their schedule, how much is direct pull pullout service. I'm gonna look at you, Meg Fowler, who was a GNT teacher. And then if they have extra time in their schedule, then they can offer some full group or whole class enrichment. It really just depends on the number of kids. We do, though, try to take kids into the enrichment group that were more on the cusp of being eligible for the pullout services. So we are trying to get that top tier of students engaged. At some districts, I'm sorry, at some schools, I think Nicole was running a K and one enrichment group. But I don't know at MES if Michaela had the opportunity in her schedule. Again, it just really depends on the number of kids that are eligible. As far as measuring success, we really feel like our identification process now streamlines that process. But we still look at state and district assessments to make sure that those kids are performing in the classroom commensurate with the their abilities that have been screened. And then the GNT teachers, they attend parent conferences, just, you know, as a typical teacher, when, so when those come in November or if a if a parent requests one, the GNT teacher will attend. And then the GNT teachers, they really try to match the interest of the group. And when I was asking about, you know, how do you decide what you're going to study? It's really curriculum-driven, so they do a lot of steam work. But if they're studying, you know, birds or reptiles, they might do a passion project or genius hour or something like that, a project that would go along with that. And then sometimes the group will decide what they want to study. So it can be an individual choice, a group choice, a curriculum-driven choice. And they do a lot of surveys to, with the students to see exit tickets, you know, your basic formative assessments to see, you know, how those things are going. So that was a lot in a short period of time. Did I feel like I hit everything? And, okay. And I think the increase in the supplies is more related to some of the other stuff that Superintendent Olson has already talked about. They buy a lot of consumables when you're building bridges out of, you know, tooth, you know, popsicle sticks, you need those when you're doing building volcanoes or things that explode or, you know, you you need the tools to be able to do that. And the and the plastic to go on the table so that you can clean that right up. So do you have any other questions about GNT?
The lead sarcophagus.
No, I was just gonna say, no, thank you. And I, the, I ask a lot of questions about the increase in supply, so I'm glad that was front-loaded.
Well, a lot of the supply accounts, just in general, you know, the eighty six tenths. You know, inflation is, you know, when you go to the grocery store and you pick up one bag of groceries and it's two hundred bucks? Years ago, that used to be four or five. The inflationary impact of what's going on is just rippled throughout the system. You know, the cost of paper used to be like thirty bucks a ream and now it's like forty fifty. Although I did talk with our guy and with Mason, that he had a one-day-only sale for thirty five dollars and that sale is gone, you know? So, you know, and we negotiate with people. We, you know, no one wants to bid anymore. We went out to bid for paper, we had no one taking it. It's like, you're gonna pay the price because we're not gonna bid out for the entire year, not knowing the volatility of the market. And no, you can't get people to bid on this stuff anymore. Plus, when we deal with Mason, you know, we we get a good product, the price is decent, we negotiate all the time. Pearl Bratton, who's my accounts payable person, gets on the phone, talks with Mason directly, chews him out a little bit, which he like, which is, I shouldn't say that. But it it does happen. We negotiate with our current vendors to say, this is unacceptable, we can't do this. And so we do try and bring the price down as much as we can. But it's not like the old days when, I remember Dave was just here when we were doing food service. I would have twenty people in my office bidding on potato chips, bidding on milk, bidding on ice cream, bidding on this, that, and the other thing. I got nobody now. No one. Same thing with Custode, go ahead, Bill.
No, I was just gonna gonna say, something that the average person doesn't think about is the fact that international economic dynamics play an important role in the pricing of paper. Over the last ten to fifteen years, China has bought an extraordinary amount of paper because they are a huge country from a geographical mass perspective, but they have very little forestation relative to many other countries. And so they are one of the biggest, if not the biggest, consumers of paper in the world right now and have been for the last ten years in particular. And that that puts great pressure on the pricing in of domestic markets.
A seasonably appropriate reference is a great side-by-side of in the movie Home Alone, when Kevin McAllister spends twenty five dollars at the grocery store, what that would cost now and it was over a hundred dollars. It's crazy, but anyway, that just made me think of that. All right, cool, moving on with.
So the next two questions, the first one was regarding police detail. Do we, do we want to review that again or we just, okay? And then the one after that was the whole supply, okay. We've beat that one, okay. So Michelle, you're off the hook on those two then. So Michelle, you're off the hook on those two then. I'll speak to the, to the science supplies and the science work. So as Laura and I are the chair of the science committee, and I have to say, I'm so happy I got this question because I'm really, really proud of the work that the science committee has done over these last three years. And especially within the last year. And we have been meeting, we've been meeting in the summer and it's, we're really proud to say that our science instruction is now aligned across K to five. It's, all of us are teaching mystery science, we're all teaching the same units, we're all looking at the same lessons. We're all making sure that our schedules reflect time for science content, which we know is critical. Especially not only to know this content so they're ready for middle and high school, but also as it relates to reading and understanding and comprehending texts. Knowing science and social studies is important background knowledge for kids to read. So I have to really, so all the members of the science committee, if you're out there listening, I'm sure you're watching this evening. We're really proud of you and thank you for this work. And I wanna also thank Assistant Superintendent Doyle, who's led us in this direction. So what you see a lot is additional purchases. We're now aligned with the next generation of science standards. And in there is some more rigorous, rigorous requirements regarding our instruction. In years past, we hadn't necessarily taught science in kindergarten, we are now. And so I'm envisioning in years to come, when we get to middle and high school, we're gonna see kids have that science contact and that background knowledge. In sixth grade, they're doing tremendous work. And there's been some realignment of the science units at the middle school level and they're working closely together. And we're purchasing materials for sixth grade science that is really going to be aligned with the next gen science standard. So what you see are costs associated with that, costs associated with that consistent instruction. We're purchasing additional mystery packs. Those packs are science supplies that are aligned with all the mystery science lessons in the units that we're teaching. And it's those things like we use for experiments that don't explode that much. But experiments and some of the performance tasks, like things like paperclips or cotton, cotton balls, whatever of that. That costs money, that used to come out of teachers' purses or, or their own costs. Now we are going to be supplying that and they're so beautifully organized. So when you teach a science lesson, you don't have to worry about scrambling all around. You have that information, you have those materials right with you and kids are loving it. Kids are loving, they love science and social studies. So that's really what that increase reflects. So was there any questions on that? I know there was a number of those, Naomi.
I, this isn't actually a question, this is something I've been wanting to say for a while, every time mystery science comes up and I haven't said it yet in a school board meeting. I can't believe these words are coming out of my mouth. One of my favorite parts of remote learning was doing the mystery science experiments at home with my son. He was in fourth grade at the time and I remember like scrambling around the house, finding all the things, the paperclips and the cotton balls and the whatevers. And my daughter, who was three at the time, would like sit there and do them with us. So like you say these mystery science things and I'm like, oh, we did those, they were so cool.
They were, they're really fun. That was one of the blessings that came from actually remote learning, so it's really exciting. So Bonnie has a next question and that relates to the music supplies. Is, we've already addressed some of that in the opening message, do you want us to further elaborate on that?
Yeah, I, I would.
Bonnie, you're up.
Yeah, please.
See, my first time talking. The increase in the music supplies at all three schools reflects an intentional investment in our music program. Where some of our instruments and music supplies need replacement as many of these resources have not been updated for years. We have seen a significant interest in our chorus, which all three of us have already talked a little bit about. And some of the instruments and supplies, like I had mentioned, needed to be updated. Excuse me. In addition, Julie had referenced these investments in the opening budget. And if you looked at the music supply count, it was relatively low. And we have some integrated arts that we're doing with our students. I think it was Mr. Olson or Ms. Doyle, I'm not sure. About some integrated work with kindergarten and first, we're doing with some third and fourth graders at Reed's. And it all takes money in order to purchase the supplies to have those extension or integrated activities. So we're just making a more of a really intentional investment in music as well as all the arts.
Well, and of course, that's very exciting for me, I, I like that. And, and I'm glad you clarified a little bit because having taught chorus for a long time, or I used to teach, not so much anymore. One of the many nice things about chorus is it's such a low cost, you know, you need, you need music and a place to stand. So that's why when I saw these big jumps, I was like, chorus isn't that expensive? As much as I love seeing numbers get bigger and choruses doubling in sizes, I think that's awesome. I have seen some of that equipment and I saw some of it at JMU's the other day when my son was at basketball practice and those tympanis look like dinosaurs. So to see, you know, that makes sense to me, to see that equipment is being replaced and updated. Especially after several years of it not being updated or replaced, that makes a lot more sense. So yeah, because chorus is pretty cheap to run.
It is, but it's the whole, it's the whole investment.
Whole investment. Thank you.
There was another question regarding the next gen science standards. Just one thing I wanted to add, when we looked at our science supplies, the average cost per student is $15 per student. Which is pretty good, pretty low considering the complexity of some of the lessons. And the next gen science standards, which are relatively new for us, they've been there for a while. The nice thing about the standards is there's a lot more engineering now included in the standards. And some of that scientific and a lot more performance task and more. And so we have, that's a great opportunity for students to demonstrate hands-on learning with science. And much of that is included in mystery science and I know the sixth grade team is really looking at materials, not, I think it's FAS that you were saying, that they're looking at to make sure that we have alignment with our science instruction. So did that answer that question? Yeah, okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, I think I'm remembering that, you know, when we did, I wanna say it was the middle schools. Like some of our standardized testing showed that science was a weak area for us.
Absolutely. You'll notice in fifth grade is the first time that they take the New Hampshire State Assessment for Science. Physical science specifically was an area where we need some additional work. And I know that Assistant Principal Fowler has been working very closely with the science facilitator, Nicole Frazetta. That's a really fun name to say. And we talked about the realignment and putting physical science squarely in sixth grade and then kind of pulling it out, what was happening? And you can speak if I'm off. They were sort of just teaching lessons and units that weren't part of the middle school band of the next gen. And so through the summer work that Julie and Laura were talking about, we really looked at where does physical science belong? And it was a little bit in seventh grade, a little bit in eighth grade, a little bit in sixth grade. So what we ended up doing was shifting the bulk of it to sixth grade, but now we have to buy materials to teach, say, waves. And we don't, they don't have anything, so we're starting with the basic kits. And so you saw that front cost a couple of years ago when we went, when we purchased mystery science. It'll be a similar cost here where we're going to purchase the kits and then we will have to buy the replacement supplies. But we bought some kits on waves and then we have one more, one or two more kits to buy. And they're just expensive as, as you start. And mystery science does not go up to sixth grade. So we were really trying to continue with that hands-on approach. We know that kids love the experiments, they love to be involved and it's phenomenon based. So that's what's happening. And I don't wanna, you know, if you wanna jump in and talk more about what's happening. But we've looked at what are the materials that the seventh and eighth grade are using? What is appropriate for an upper elementary school, making sure that there's some alignment there? So it's been a lot of, it's been a lot of work and a lot of really great conversation and a lot of aha moments where people are saying, whoa, we really need to teach waves. And lucky you, Nicole. And Melanie and others, so. But yes, I'm excited about, as, as Julie said, it's been a really great approach. We do have additional work to do with social studies. I know that was a question that came up. And not to get too ahead, but there are a lot of questions about the Witten Wisdom program that I'm, you know, I, I did put a one pager at your seats. I don't know if you saw that, it's in your packet to just kind of give you some information, some talking points. Those are live links and I'll send this to you as a document so that you can click around there. But Witten Wisdom really does focus on science and social studies. But it's very heavy American history, research-based, different perspectives, everything from westward expansion to the Civil War to, you know, there's just a lot of heavy history topics in that program as well. But there aren't a lot of great, and just to be honest, there aren't a lot of great social studies, phenomenon-based, hands-on curriculums out there. It's, it's pretty dry. But we're working at it, I think we're looking at resources to, that we could use.
Well, I just, can I just finish my thought, Lori? Can I just finish my, I just wanna wrap up from my, I just want, what I wanna say is because, you know, our, our scores were on the low side. You know, when you're starting in fifth grade and into middle school, the only way to correct that is to start in the elementary school and to build their knowledge base up, up, up. Because you can't start in fifth grade and be like, hope that goes well at the end of the year, right? So I appreciate the investment because that's what it takes. The thing I hear over and over from this community is we want to see a drive towards excellence and we want to see test scores that reflected in part in test scores. We know that, we know as teachers, we know that's not the end all be all. But this is how we get there and it requires investment, it requires investment.
And to follow up with what Julie was talking about, one of the things we noticed is that depending on the teacher, it was really teacher driven. So you might have a unit on clouds or reptiles. And if I really like plants, I might do a whole thing on botany and that may be on the state assessment. But now what we've done is mystery science is aligned to the next gen and the New Hampshire SAS is aligned to the next generation science. So if you are agreeing in kindergarten that we're gonna do these three units, we should be building upon that knowledge to then first grade, we're gonna do these three units. Now K to six, it is very much an integrated, there's life science, there's earth science and there's physical science. And the engineering part is sort of woven in. And mystery science, you know, I don't know another product that does it as well as that.
Yeah, I'm just really excited about it. It's really exciting because obviously the intentionality behind it makes all the difference.
Yeah, and I, I can imagine that as a, as a community member, we've spent money over the last couple of years, you know, investing in the core programs that I just think, you know, there was probably conversation about it and just didn't have the, the time to be able to go through the process, select it, figure out what we really wanted to do. And we've just, I feel like we've made a lot of progress just since I've been here on the core programs. And a core program isn't everything, the teacher is the most important person in the room and guiding that instruction. But if they don't have a core program to work from, you're, you're expecting teachers to decide what's important rather than looking at the standards and letting the standards drive it. So, but I agree with you, it's the, it is the place to start and, and we knew that going in.
Yeah, great, thank you.
So I just had a question on the fifth and sixth new materials. So is it gonna be like fifth grade is gonna have these materials and sixth, because it just, that was my only question. So if, you know, there was ever any movement or anything, like this is their curriculum, okay, that's all.
So the next question, Bonnie wants to talk about paper. So Bonnie, would you give us some more information on paper?
Paper's expensive. So. Mic drop, right? Thank you very much. Does anybody have any, I, I think we've talked about.
I think we gotta jump the gun on that one for you, Bonnie, so I'm sorry, yeah.
I just wanna say though, it went from $26 a case, I remember, to now $51 to $49.
We looked today, it was even higher than 51, so it's.
But you didn't get the lightning sale.
Oh, no, we did, we went for it, but prior to the lightning sale. Five dollars more than that 51, so. Paper's expensive.
Black Friday deals for paper.
And a lot of it's, a lot of it's the freight. A box of papers heavy, right? And to sort of put it on a truck that's running diesel in an 18 wheeler and deliver it with a lift on the end of it. You know, a lot of that is the, the delivery charges too, because, you know, diesel isn't two bucks a gallon anymore. It's getting up there and at 24, 25, you're trying to prognosticate what you think it's going to be. And if the cost of fuel goes up, if diesel hits like six bucks a gallon like it did a couple of years ago, we're gonna be looking at more than 50 bucks a case for paper, everything's gonna go up. Because petroleum is what, what drives this economy unfortunately still.
So moving on. Michelle, I know you had the next question.
So there was a question about a decrease in our English Language Arts text account. And some of it has to do with the purchase of Witten Wisdom, which Amy talked about, so we'll have new curriculum. And some of it is we, when we purchased a number of the foundational skills we needed, like foundations last year, we had budgeted for five kindergarten classes, we only ended up with four. So we have curriculum for the additional kindergarten that we're looking to add. So that's part of our decrease, decrease as well as we don't, we will not need to buy all of the texts that we would have bought now that we have Witten Wisdom. And then obviously the three of us work closely together, so TFS and RFS have also budgeted for geodes, which are books that go with our foundations program and other items that may not end up being needed, in which case that would result in a reduction in their line items as well.
So that was my question because I just wanted the community to know that there are decreases in the budget too. And people are really paying attention and trying to come in as level funded as possible, so thank you.
Sure.
The next question relates to, Michelle already answered the piece about, piece about the decrease. And then Amy, I think this is the piece about the core reading program, Witten Wisdom. And would you be willing to share some information at this time?
Sure, as I mentioned, I put a one pager at your, at your desk and then I'll also forward you a live document so that you can take a look at the links. So over the last, so last year, we invested significantly in the word recognition part of Scarborough's Rope. I don't know how much, and I've mentioned this before at a board meeting, how far you are down the rabbit hole of the science of reading. But there are actually two parts that we work on. The word recognition part, which is we want to build students' automaticity with being able to look at a word and be able to apply systematically some skills to be able to identify what the word is. So those parts are phonemic awareness, decoding, and then you're also looking at sight recognition. So we have purchased Hagerty, that started the year before I came, I think, at TFS. And then it was adopted, fully implemented last year at RFS and TFS. And that is, you know, a quick 10 minute lesson during the day that really builds phonemic awareness. The second part that we knew that we need, we needed was a phonics program. We had been, I think intermittently, sporadically, some places using the Fountas and Penel Phonics Program. But we know now that the efficacy around that program is not what students need. It's not, we're not queuing students to be able to guess, to be able to know what a word is, we wanna teach them phonics. So we went through the process of looking at what programs we felt would be a good match for our community and we ended up adopting foundations. So Foundations is, is produced by a company called Wilson. And so if you look up Wilson, they're aligned, you know, beautifully with the science of reading. But they also have other pieces that would help us in our tier two and tier three instruction. And I can talk a little bit more about that. So what we're really, again, looking to do is align our practices and then starting with the core program. And I think one of the great things that I've been able to do with the principals and also the literacy coordinators is really look at our data and, and look at what that story is telling us. And what it was saying is we need more systematic phonics instruction. And so we did that piece. And then we also knew that kids need to practice those skills. So aligned with foundations, and I think Michelle talked about these decodable readers, which are called geodes. And geodes also are aligned with the science of reading, they're aligned with the scope and sequence of foundations. And they also are part of the Great Minds Program, so there, it's also knowledge building. So these readers that kids can use would be on lots of different topics. But they're aligned with the sounds and symbols that they're practicing in foundation. So it really is, we, we're not expecting teachers anymore to pull from four or five different places. We're saying, here's your core program. And some teachers are really skilled at doing that, but when you've had as much, you know, we've got teachers that are leaving the profession, we've grown exponentially. It's really hard to have a first. We've grown exponentially. It's really hard to have a first-year teacher come in. They simply don't know yet. They don't, you know, they haven't been a literacy coordinator or, you know, taught for 26 years. So they were really expected to pull from all these different places and that just wasn't manageable. So that's the word recognition part. What we're proposing is the, the language comprehension part of what we know we need to build skilled readers. And that is the knowledge building part. Julie talked a little bit about it related to Mystery Science. But it is really a comprehensive language arts curriculum that looks at reading, writing, listening and speaking. And so it is, as you know, Witten Wisdom, I would say the core texts are really at the center of that program. And it looks at what are some, you know, interest areas that kids might have? How can we build long-term knowledge around America, events in history, events in science, historical people, places? It really is an, if you look at the text and one of the links takes you to all the cortex per grade level. And then a lot of them are award-winning topics, are award-winning books that you read in school. Bud Not Buddy, The Phantom Tollbooth. So books that parents would recognize. But also it brings in paintings. It has musical pieces that you play for the students. It has, I would say, audiobooks. It has short stories, essays, vignettes. I mean, it really looks at not just novels and not just contrived short passages. It really does provide a comprehensive overview of different kinds of texts. And so it also has a, I would say, a structured lesson plan. And if this goes through and the voters approve this budget, we will do the same thing that we've done with iReady, which is provide really high-quality professional development teachers. They come on site and they would do a launch with the teachers, show them how to use all of the materials. This budget request includes digital access for teachers and students. So students will be able to access whatever they need at home on their one-to-one devices. But there are also consumable workbooks that come with it so that teachers don't have to develop their own assessments. The core common assessments, and that helps with our competencies, it's, it's built into the program. So this is really the second part of, of, we've got the word recognition part. I really feel like going in the right direction. And then the other part of that is building vocabulary, building, I don't know if you want to jump in, Michelle. There's a lot of pieces related to literacy when you are looking to build kids' schema and their scaffolding of what they know about how to read a word and then put it into context. So that's a lot of information. I, I will just also say that Witten Wisdom is, is published by the same company that produces the geodes. So there's a lot of alignment there. It's a company called Great Minds. So there's a lot of collaboration where if, when you look at it on paper and you talk about it, it's very coordinated and that is very much on purpose. We didn't want to say, well, let's do, because, you know, we didn't want to say, let's do this phonics program and let's do this knowledge-based program. It doesn't make sense. We were really trying to make smart decisions. One more thing for those people out there that are following the research, Witten Wisdom is recognized by the Knowledge Matters Campaign. It's one of only six knowledge-building curriculum that have that, that endorsement. So we are again looking to bring a very research-based and evidence-based program into the Merrimack School District.
So I think one of the things that I never realized, previous to being on the board, maybe slightly before I joined the board, was that each elementary school was doing something a little different with literacy. And that was stunning to me as, I mean, you, actually I had a kid that went through Thornton's Ferry, I mean Reed's Ferry and then Thornton's Ferry. You'd think I would have caught on to it as a teacher, but I didn't. And then I, it was, it was really surprising to me. And to, so I, I, you just keep saying the word alignment and I could like cry. Like it's so important for alignment across the district. But also within each subject, I mean, like the advancements we've made just in the time that I've been on the board has been stunning. So again, I've heard from the community, we want to drive towards excellence and this is how you do it. Aligning, certainly getting all the elementary schools on the same page. That was kind of critical. But then, you know, making sure that everything is aligned so intentionally. Like the alignment and the intentionality has increased, in my opinion, in this district exponentially in recent years. And that is what is going to get the results that our community is looking for. So I just want to say I'm grateful for how much work you've done, Amy, all of you and the people that work with you. So please pass that on because this is so important. Literacy, this, the moves that we're making towards improving literacy in our district are so critical and worthy of every investment we can make.
May I just say to that point, one of the biggest concerns that we have had over the last several years is the pockets of inconsistency in programming services, what we do, how we do it, when we do it between schools. And as you just said, that is the one thing we have tried to focus on is making sure every child has the same opportunities across the entire district in each respective grade level.
It's so important and I'm so grateful. And parents, parents in this district should not have a different experience than another student in this district at a different school. And to real, when parents realize that happens and had, and you know, in the past, it hasn't been great, right? Like, oh wow, there's a difference there. But to finally fix that problem and really all be rowing in the same direction with the same equipment is, it feels like it should have been obvious, but here we are and this is, it's so important. And I'm so glad we're finally doing that.
And I just want to take a minute to thank the people in front of you because we have had some really, I would say, difficult conversations about the direction we're headed. But each one of them has been committed to making the change and then holding each other accountable, which is also not easy. I mean, when you think about their, you know, I think you get the sense that they are a pretty close group of people. But when you have to say to your colleague who's also your friend, hey, we agreed on this and now you're not X, Y, and Z, that, that's, you know, that's where you know that you're building synergy within your leadership team where you can say, we're still friends, right? We're going to go to Buckley's after this and get a cookie, but you said X, Y, and Z.
Sounds good to me.
Yep. They have just been, you know, phenomenal with the change and helping us manage also. You know, I would say about myself, I don't think people would use the word patient when they talk about me. I'm like, oh, we have to do that. And I walk into Matt's office, Matt, do we have money to do this right now? And so they've been able to say, okay, here's what we can do this year. Here's what we can, you know, do systematically, step at a time. So there's a lot of really good work to be done, but the people in front of you, the leaders in front of you, they have embraced that change with open arms and we never could have done it if they, if they were barriers. So I'm really appreciative. I'm saying it on live TV.
And you can, and I acknowledge that change is really hard. And I feel like educators thrive on routine and familiarity. And I think personally, just seeing it in the building that I'm in, you know, change is exceedingly, exceedingly hard for educators. And so I just applaud all of you for being able to embrace change and, and try to do what is absolutely the best thing to drive towards excellence for the students in our, in our district. And I think it's going to pay off phenomenally and you will be the ones that get to say, we helped to do that. So thank you.
And I just, I just want to say the same thing. Like I think that, you know, when we get our test scores, when we first got our test scores and people were so upset, we weren't even aligned to state standards. So how could the kids pass the test if you're not aligned to state standards? So this has been incredible speed, incredible work at a very fast pace. And so it's, it's in the budget because we're changing, you know, science and literacy and math. I mean, so many core areas all at one time because we realized we weren't going in the right direction. So again, I just, I want to say like, yes, there is increases in the budget and it's because we're looking at those core courses and we're getting the curriculum aligned to state standards, which is critical if we want to see results.
And I just want to add, Witten Wisdom, just like foundations, there is an upfront cost. It's really around the cortex. And Michelle mentioned that at her school. Once you purchase the cortex, we will have to go through the replacement process. If we add a grade level, we have to buy the cortex. But I, it is, as you look through the numbers, I know, it's expensive. But just keep in mind, we're buying cortex for every classroom in the district, K to six, so that they all have the same, you know, books and materials that they need. But moving forward, there will be consumables in the budget. But the cortex, it will really only be replacements. So there's a lot of, it's money upfront. I would say maybe half moving forward, maybe even less than that. I did ask our sales rep, you know, in year two, how much does it cost? And she didn't quite get that back to me yet. So I can give you that at a later date. But the cortex, it's expensive to front load, but moving forward, it would just be the consumables.
And just getting back to what Jenna was talking about, I was invited to come to the Budget Committee meeting on Tuesday. And that was a question that was asked was how do you justify budget increases looking at our test scores or looking at rankings, which of course I don't put a whole lot into rankings or anything like that. And this is what investment looks like and this is what progress looks like. And it's, it'd be fun to have that same conversation and say, wait a few years and see what this looks like. Because it's going to be big, for sure.
And at the last meeting, I just brought up, if you look at our test scores and you look at our rankings, they've all gone up in the last two years. So, you know, if someone asks that question, well, we, we're on the road to improvement. And, you know, the Merrimack School District right now, we're at a B, you know, which is, you know, on a roll. We're going for As, but we're at a B. And that's, you know, and I said last school board meeting, like the only place that we scored a C was diversity. And, and Julie's school is going to help us out there, but we're getting there. But that's like a hard place to, to improve because you have to have, you know, diverse populations. So, you know, Merrimack schools are moving in the right direction. We are very proud of all of it. And it, it takes three to five years from when you start. And so we started like a year ago to implement. So three to five years, we're going to see great benefits for all of this work.
And I for one appreciate your impatience, right? I mean, I have a kid in the district. We have kids in the district and, and our kids represent every other kid. And you know what? We all want the best education for our children. And, you know, this is, this is what we have to do to get us there. So I appreciate the fact that you fight on behalf of the students in this district.
Well, thank you, everybody. That was a wonderful dialogue. So Matt, the next question is yours. And actually the next couple of questions, one is about phones, the cost of phones across the elementary schools. How many phones does this represent? And are there less expensive systems we could look into?
May I just interrupt you for a minute, Julie, because I think we skipped over the enrollment question?
Oh, my apologies. We did. So actually, Matt, it's the one we lost 52 students. Thank you Superintendent.
Matt, if you don't, might I just say make a couple of comments? This is, this is a question that many residents in any community ask when you have a decline in enrollment. As you saw with some information I gave you several weeks ago, over a five-year period, pre-K through four, our enrollment has dropped by 52 students. The propensity is to ask, well, have you decreased your, your staffing? That's very difficult in that it all depends on the density of that decline with respect to a particular building or buildings. We have roughly 80 classes, pre-K through grade four. If you take those 52 students over 80 classes, that's about 0.6 students per class, which means you can't really cut a staff member. Now, if those 52 students were in a particular school in over two or three grade levels, then I would say to you, yes, we should be reducing staff. But, but they're not. They're distributed among all of our elementary schools. The one thing that is important to note also about staffing is that in any one particular year, we could have an anomaly where, where there is a decline in enrollment in a particular grade in a, in a particular school. And the tendency would be to say, well, let's, let's cut a staff member. But what you really need to do is look another year or two out. Because that low enrollment in that one particular year in that grade level may exhibit a, an increase once again over the next couple of years. And so you don't want to cut a great staff member, only to have to rehire someone another year or two after the fact. So that's the complexity of enrollment analysis and staffing reduction in relation to enrollments. You have to be very careful what you do to not take any action that might come back to bite you down, down the road. So it all depends on the distribution of the students where that decline happens. Is it concentrated in an area, in a particular school, in several different grade levels? Or is it distributed across all of the elementary schools, pre-K through four, such that it doesn't allow us the affordability of cutting a staff, staff member?
If I can just elaborate a little bit, I, I know from historical purposes, this district years ago, around the time we were building the new middle school, we were at crisis proportion. The elementary schools had around 700 kids in there. We had people in janitor's closets. We had people go under the stairs giving us instruction. And since then, we have feathered down to around four, 4,000 kids approximately. And during that time, there was probably around 40 different staff, 40 staff members that were reduced over that period of time. So it takes a while and it takes a while over, like Bill said. If you have a concentrated area where you can point and go, aha, there it is. But when they're like all over the district and they're evenly dispersed over grade levels, it's really hard to do such. But during that period, and that's a long time, we did reduce the number of staff members significantly. When you look at the reduction this year, let's look at what's going on in 24, 25. You've got an increase of around 54 kids. So we're on the way up again. We said this, I swear to, if you bring back a tape recording from like 15 years ago, we were saying, you know what's going to happen? We're going to peak at around 5,000 kids. Then we're going to slowly decline as the years go on. Then we're going to hit a plateau for around five to six years. And now we're going to start to go up. Now is the time that we're starting to go up. So what we said decades ago is really what is going, what is, we're witnessing right now.
Yeah. Most, most of the research in demographics has shown over the years that although it's very difficult to precisely project enrollments, it does over a longer period of time tend to be cyclical in nature. And that's what occurs in most communities.
It's kind of like the business cycle. There's ups, there's ups, there's downs, you know? It all depends what happens with the Fed. They, they haven't raised the interest rate for around three months. Well, let's say they raise it next month. All of a sudden, the economy is going to tank again. So it's, 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 it's like that. It's, it's very cyclical. You know, we found 5,000 right now was, was our max back then. There are a lot of families having more than one kids, kid. Nowadays, families don't have as many children as they used to. So even though our population has increased, not necessarily our schooling population has increased. And if you look at the numbers in the state of New Hampshire, they're showing the same trend we are. But we're, we're on the uprise again. And then that's going to, we're not going to, we'll probably never hit 5,000 again. I hope we don't because that means another building project and we don't want to do that. We want to keep things as they are. But it may mean, like, like we were talking before, a grade realignment or look at other options to kind of get us there. So that's basically what's going on with enrollment. The new enrollments show us going up and it's an upward trend, trend right now.
So my, my only point to this is when we look at class size, you know, of course, I'm very pro-school, but you know, on average in the United States, an average elementary school is 20.9. You know, schools in the area have 22.4, 18.6. And so for me, when, when I'm looking at this, I really feel like, what is the critical need? And for me, the critical need this year is definitely a central office building because I feel like we have real safety concerns. So I just want that to be aware. You know, I want everyone to be aware that's part of my thought process.
Yeah, we're, we're still kind of fine tuning some of the, in the per-school enrollments. In fact, we had a conversation on that, that today. So I made some adjustment. I talked with Bill. And, you know, we're looking at anywhere from 17 to 21 as far as per-class enrollment right now with the elementary schools. So we're along those lines.
Right. And 24 is too, you know, like when you look at the research, 24 seems to be the breaking point. You know, there, if you go over 24, you're, you're really stretching everyone way too thin.
Absolutely. And we're not, we're not getting to 24. But they're in the, they're in the twenties. There's a few that are like sixteens because if you drop a teacher, all of a sudden you start going to 23. That's how it works. You know, you can be. You know, you can be at 16 and you can be comfortable, but if you, if you cut a teacher, all of a sudden that ratio goes from 16 to like 23. Because it's so, there's like four teachers going to five teachers and with the enrollment, it jumps up that much. So you do a little balancing act there.
Sorry about skipping that. Thank you Superintendent Olson. The next question is around phones.
Sure.
Thank you.
Our telephone, we have, we're on VoIP, right? Voice over IP, we've been there for a long time. The town was the first to go to VoIP. They had 100 pots lines. We had 100 pots lines and then we had a Centrex system that allowed us to have a lot of extensions off of that. So we have around 653 phones district wide, phone in every classroom, phone in every space, et cetera, et cetera. And talking with Jason Pelletier, what we're going to do is we're going to look at starting to replace those systems. The amount of money we're, we're spending on phone service hasn't changed since probably 2015, 2016. Because we're, we're utilizing the voice over IP. And now is the time to kind of looking, looking at replacing those older units. Those older Cisco phones that we have with, with brand new units. So as far as Jason's CIP, we're going to be looking at that and into the future to, to do that. But the phones, the 653 of them, we spend on total probably around $80,000 period district wide, which is what we spent back in 2015, 2016, probably a little bit earlier. If I go back earlier than that, before we had the VoIP, I bet you we were spending much more than that. So this being over the internet and everything like that, part of the charge of the phone service is the internet that runs the voice over IP. Everything like that is being charged off to that phone line.
So the next question is regarding around the proposed budget for regular textbooks as well as the totals in those accounts. Did you want us to review that even though we did talk about, okay, we're all set. Okay, thank you. All right, I just don't want to skip things.
I just wanted to understand, like if we had this reading program now, we're moving, but it all got explained. So, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And then the last question is another enrollment question. And it says, I'd like to know the number of students projected in grades K to four in each school at each grade level with the five-year enrollment trends.
We've, in, in the budget introduction material, provided you with enrollment figures, class size ratios. If there is some additional breakdown or delineation that you would like, we'll be glad to provide that with you, to you within the next few days.
That would be, that would be great. I talked to Matt before the meeting started because we used to get the NESTDEC enrollments, you know? And I know you gave us everything in a different form, but I just like seeing the actual, like the number and how it looks like. Cause you can go back, like this, this one was given to us in 2021. So we can actually, I started to go back and look at what they projected and what they actually enrolled. And believe it or not, it was really close. I mean, it was with one or two kids in each grade level.
With, with the, with the NESTDEC report, we do have that and we are pretty close. When we look, when we, we have that one sheet that I'm not sure if we include, I don't think we included in the budget message that goes back to like 1993. And when you, when you, when you look at that sheet and then you look at the actuals, you know, with, within like, you know, five, 4,000 kids, 5,000 kids, we miss it by like maybe 20, 30 kids every single year. That was a James O'Neill special that he did, right? And so we just carried it on and it seems to be fairly accurate. And what Bill's done is, is fairly accurate too. We, we kind of match up very well with coming at it from two different directions.
Yeah, we use, we use the NESTDEC data as sort of the first approximation. And then we overlay on that what we know locally. We've done a six-year cohort progression ratio average for all the grades. And so we, we try to put a little bit more precision in terms of how many students this year in grade one will be transitioning to grade two in a, in a particular school or in entirety. And so we're always going to be a little bit off in some areas. We know that kindergarten and grade one are in terms of demographic projections are always the least reliable because there is no trend there. What we do is we look at the births to estimate kindergarten enrollment. We look at births five years prior. And what we've done over the six-year average calculated that the cohort progression ratio from birth, five years down the road averages about 1.0 away. For in other words, in a manner of speaking, for every hundred students born in Merrimack, five years later, there's 108 students that attend kindergarten, which is an in-migration, out-migration factor dynamic. And so we have a great interest in demographics because taxpayers don't have money to waste. And so we don't want to over-project enrollments, but we also don't want to under-project them and get caught, caught short, which is equally as, as problematic for students as much as overestimating is problematic for taxpayers.
Yeah, and part, part of it is, is kind of knowing the town that you work in. I mean, you know, NESTDEC does a great job. They look at all the per, building permits, they look at everything like that. And, but you, you drive around, you get a sense of what's going on. All of a sudden you see Slate and you go, wow, isn't that interesting? All of a sudden you go behind, where, 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 what's the name of that place where the old shaws used to be? 360 Commons. And all of a sudden you look behind 360 Commons and up on the mountain, there's a bunch of condos. It's like, when did those happen? And you know, so you're constantly looking at, at things that you're seeing in your community that are being developed. And there is an explosion in these apartment complexes. Now granted, they don't produce many kids and Bill, Bill is, is familiar with that. But at some point, people are going to be moving into those apartments who now have single-family homes because they want a different kind of lifestyle because they're tired of mowing the lawn. They're tired of shoveling the driveway. They're tired of, kind of sounds like me. I'm tired of mowing the lawn. I'm tired of shoveling the driveway. And so they look at that as a good opportunity. And then that opens up a piece of real estate that who's going to go there? Somebody who's a young family, maybe they're going to have a couple of young kids. The, the developments up on Chestnut Hill? I see a lot of three-car garages there. I know that they are probably not going to have like, you know, four and five-year-olds. Maybe they're going to have some upper elementary school kids. Maybe they're going to have some middle school kids because those people have, those people are better established right now. Those aren't starter homes. Or if they are, boy, I'll tell you, it would have been nice to have one of those 30 years ago when I first got married. So it's one of these things that, uh, it, it's kind of, it's a little, it's NESTDEC, it's what you see. It's what Bill gets from when, when he's talking with Community Development Office in the town. He's got a wicked good relationship with them. And so it's all that put together and trying to get the most accurate piece we can as far as enrollment projections.
So, so my final thought on all of that is, um, as we know, the town of Merrimack, and Matt, we've had this conversation. They, the town of Merrimack got assessed at $74 million less in industrial and commercial properties. And in residential properties have continued to go up. So what happened last month is that the tax bills went out and the average American family in Merrimack is paying 800 to $1,000 more in taxes. And so that makes our job so much tougher this year because, um, of course, people that don't understand the work that we're doing or they're trying to figure out how they're going to come up with more money, you know, $80 a month or a hundred dollars more a month to pay taxes. They have concerns. So that's just, we, we understand that and we, we really appreciate all the work you're doing. We couldn't ask you to do any more work, but we have, um, you know, this huge job ahead of us.
It, it really kind of hurts us a little bit and, and it kind of makes me kind of pause and, and think about it. You know, if our budget was flat and hadn't gone up at all, the taxes, the tax burden shift to those who own single-family homes, their taxes would have gone up. Even if the appropriation wouldn't gone up because of the shift in the value or the shift in the burden of who pays what. It went away from commercial industrial. It went away from a lot of the apartments and everything like that. And it went up on the single-family homeowners. It's like we were joking around, all of a sudden, I'm living in a house that I couldn't afford. You know, this is ridiculous. You know, when I look at it, I mean, the assessed valuation has gone up significantly. So the burden has shifted.
And I, I think that's something that, you know, everybody needs to hear and understand is I think we have one of the most pro-education school boards around. And all we want is to give everything that we can to make everybody succeed. But as Lori explained, we have a very tall task ahead of us. And so it's going to take all hands on deck to communicate that message. And, you know, these are such critical needs and improvements and asks, and I think we all respect that. But, um, we definitely have a lot of work to do for that, for sure.
Can I, may I just make a comment? There was a, someone made a comment at the budget committee meeting last week about return on investment.
Yes.
And that's important because from a taxpayer perspective, and we're all taxpayers in various communities, we want a significant return on investment. And that's what we're trying to accomplish here. We're making significant improvements to the quality of what students have available to them each and every year. We've got, we've got a distance to go, but we're trying to do it as efficiently and cost effectively as possible. But please understand that we will give you that return on investment in this district. You know, Lori, you've alluded to the fact that the scores are going up. We, we are not satisfied and we will continue. We've got a great staff, great administrators, great staff, teachers and parent professionals. Just that we've got a few outdated practices that we're working on right now and we need to improve and we're, we're going to improve it. But just have confidence that we know what we're doing and children are going to benefit from this.
All right, so we're now back to Chairperson Martin's questions. And I just have to say, I know all of us very much appreciate the support that we have received from the school board over the years. And we could not do this without you, so we're very, very appreciative. And we also understand the cost for our, for our families that we work with closely. So, thank you. Chairperson, excuse me, School Board Chair Martin, you mentioned at the beginning that a lot of your questions may have been answered by the supplies. I think the one question that I, in reviewing this, is the guidance supplies. Where you had a question, but I think that relates to the inflationary cost as well as we continue to invest in tier-two interventions for those kids that are still struggling with social emotional skills. But I think every other question was answered.
I was checking them off.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that we answered your questions.
You did, thank you so much.
So we're going to jump to School Board Member Halter, who, thank you, we have some different questions. There you go. And so the first-
You did answer a bunch though.
Oh, okay, we, I saw that, but if you hold us to task, if we skip a question. The first one was, I would love to learn more about the assemblies. This is in reference to the kindergarten assemblies. And the reason why we have this budget line item is because our kindergarten students don't go on the traditional field trips outside of school. They stay close to home. We like it that way, it's safer. And so the line item you see in there, and again, this is consistent across all of our lower elementary schools, is we have Carriage Shack Farm visit our schools. It's one of our funnest days when you have a llama and a pig and a pony in our front circles. So we encourage all of you to come and visit to one of our highlights of our, our rare year. The next one was what caused the cost for science field trips to go up? And again, our favorite word is alignment. We looked at our science field trip, all the science facilitators. And we looked at what was aligned with our units that we were teaching. And because some units have changed, uh, we've had a chain, a field trip in third grade. So the, the field trip that we're going to is a Great Bay Discovery Center. It's a little bit farther, so there's therefore increased costs for chaperones and buses. But it's a better field trip and it's more aligned with what we're teaching in third grade. So that's the cost for that. The police detail, I believe we've already answered, music supplies. Health supplies were the safety backpacks. And then you had asked a question about MES and the text and why that might have been difference. And I believe Principal Romaine answered that to some extent. Amy explained the new reading program. And Michelle, are you still out there? Because there's a question on shelving.
Very excited to talk about our art room. Yes, so this year we have in our budget a line to replace the shelving that I think was built with the school? And I'd have to turn to you, Matt, to know, to give the definite on that. So the way the art room is set up, there's actually cabinets that are aligning one wall. And then on top of the cabinets against the wall are the shelves where all of the art supplies are stored. So the students can't actually reach the supplies. So Mrs. Conrad does a great job getting everything ready and organized and teaching the kids the routines. However, a lot of their materials are just not accessible to kids, which makes it harder to implement an art curriculum when you're constantly having to get things down. So in addition, we're going to take out, part of that is to take out all of the cabinets that are there to put new shelving that will be floor and up. And then also the sinks that are there, it also replaces, there's two sinks that, the cabinet part underneath that is rotting. And the sinks, um, they have a, a very interesting way of spraying out when the kids are washing brushes and things like that. So we're, we're hoping to replace those with this as well.
You said they were as old as the school. How old is the school?
That part of the school is what, like 1960 something?
Something around that ilk, yeah, I would say so.
I'll look at the plaque tomorrow in the hallway and let you know. There's a few of them. The school was built in parts?
It's a plaque that doesn't have my name on it.
It does not. It does not, down by the other one, it does. And you should have the one by the gym too, our brand new wing down there.
I'm good with the roughly 60.
I do have a spreadsheet that shows all that stuff, yeah.
I think the last question you had asked that we haven't answered was for RFS and TFS around the travel account. And so we have just more of our staff members taking from that travel account. And at Reed's and Thornton's, they have farther to travel. When they do payroll and go to the SAU, they have farther to travel. So that's why we're higher than MES. And did we answer all of your questions sufficiently?
The only one that I think you did answer, but I didn't realize you were answering it, was the one right below that with the, the line at, for the reading texts at Reed's and Thornton's. Cause I know we talked about a line for language arts texts and I was wondering what the difference was.
A lot of the difference is purely related to numbers, uh, numbers of the students and also numbers for classrooms. And then we're also looking to do scholastic storyworks and just more of that is more costly because our enrollment is higher and we have more teachers and newer teachers.
And Michelle had mentioned the G.O.'s books, the kits are, are expensive. And she, we purchased five for kindergarten. And then if they need an additional first grade, you're talking about probably 1,500 a kit. And so if she needs first and third and you need second, that's a lot of the difference as well.
And just further note too, if we look at wit and wisdom and we don't need to make those purchases, we will not make those purchases and our accounts will go down. Just, but that's something we're fully, we're still exploring. So Mrs. Fowler, you've been waiting very patiently. Here is a microphone for some questions for you.
Okay. I'm going to do my very best. And if I don't have an answer that you're looking for, I will find it for you. I think we'll start, I believe Mr. Martin's questions, I think we've gotten through most of them. It looks like there may be one, a couple related to music. I know, or, so I think there was one question about the increase in our equipment repairs for music. Simply the cost for the repairs has increased. That, that's all it is really.
Do we know what we're repairing?
The instruments, the instruments that the school owns. It also includes piano tuning and we have two pianos that need tuning each year.
One thing to think about- Um, one thing to think about down the road, um, is the quality of um, clavonovas and electronic pianos have gone up. Like I know our school has completely switched over. We've gotten rid of acoustic pianos entirely for that reason. Acoustic pianos are beautiful and they're great, um, but they're super expensive to upkeep and maintain, so um, this would be like a one-time purchase for like forever. You would never have to tune it, so.
They, they're quite hard to move too, I will say that.
Oh yeah, for sure. There's actually like a whole industry dedicated to it.
Well, years ago, we used to share a piano between MES and J Mews. And we used to roll it down the hill over those bricks.
Goes out of tune.
Exactly.
Um, I think you also had a question about uh, travel, why we hadn't spent our travel account. Um, it will be spent this current year. Uh, last year, uh, we truthfully don't have staff that travel often. Our um, staff that might need to go to the SAU, it's just a stone's throw away. Um, even the bank, we're, we're so centrally located that that account doesn't get pulled from very often. Um, Dr. Rowan, I realized that we had that account for things like um, traveling to um, some professional development retreats and that kind of thing.
Right, that's kind of what I assumed it was.
Yeah, so we, we have used it this year, but last year we were, we were just too new. I think we didn't really realize that we should use it, so now we know.
Great, thank you.
Sure. I think, was that it for you?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, okay.
A lot of it was supply stuff.
All right, and I think I have a list from Ms. Halter, is that okay?
Can I read my first one? Cause it was more of a comment than a question?
Yeah.
Last year, um, one of my questions was what is Project Safeguard? Because I had no idea. And I wanted to mention that like a couple of months later, I actually got to go to it with my then sixth grader and I was really, I, I really enjoyed it. It, I did some, it was really, there was some good information and, and good experiences for both the parents and the kids. Um, so I wanted to say I appreciated it. Um, and I was also, just the, a comment is like, I didn't know it existed until the budget meetings and then um, the, we didn't get a lot of notice about it beforehand, so I would like to see some like excitement building about it i- in like fifth grade even, like with the, the orientations and we were in the middle of COVID when we started at J Mews, so it's possible that it was deliberately not, uh, not done, but I wanted to just point that out that I would like to see it um, promoted more and I think you had something to say about it.
Well, I, yeah, I just wanted to piggyback off of that because having done Project Safeguard with a few kids. Um, and this isn't strictly budgetary, but I'm mentioning it because I, I, Project Safeguard almost never comes up here ever, except at this time. It's just something that we do to evaluate the effectiveness of that program, to make sure it is up to date and that you know, I feel like we're doing a lot of work in this district of taking programs we've always done, evaluating them, deciding whether they are still valuable in twenty twenty-three. Um, do we need to change them? Do we need to update them? Do we need to, what do we need to do to make it different than it was fifteen years ago? Um, I don't know the answer to what it is now. The three kids I went to is the same, right? So my comment is actually not budgetary, but in thinking about it just because it's coming up, just what are we doing to evaluate the effectiveness of this program? Because it's, you know, it, it costs money. And I want to make sure that we're using that money to its best advantage and making sure that we're, we are using that time because parents do come out. So that we're using that time with parents really, really intentionally, back to the same word we keep talking about. Um, so just that was my thought when I saw that number in um, the budget for Project Safeguard is how, how effective is that program? Are we evaluating its effectiveness and trying to look at what is good to keep or what might need to be revamped for ongoing? Just side note.
Thank you for that feedback.
So this, this goes back to the um, police coverage. And uh, I did have a conversation with Matt about this, but um, my question would be um, you know, to explore the number of events that are going to have more than two hundred people. And is there a way, you know, with those, you know, those gates that you could lock off parts of school? Cause I know um, part of the reason for this is, is you know, you have two hundred people, you have, you know, that, that is a huge school. Um, where are these people going? So when, when, you know, is there another way that we could block off some of it? And so if we're going to have over two hundred people or three hundred people at an event, maybe that would be, we would want to have the police coverage, but maybe if it's under that, is there a way to, you know, um, make sure that the people are just in the area they're supposed to be in?
We do, you actually use um, our fire doors to block off sections of the building when we have um, any size group for an activity after school, um, as often as we can. Um, I think that this past year I called Mr. Chevanel, um, the night of family fun night because we were expecting a pretty good sized crowd. I think we ended up with probably between three and four hundred people in the building. Um, and we felt, kind of, so we wanted to make sure that our families were safe. You know, I think when we are advert- advertising heavily that we have a large group of people gathering, we live in a world that um, there's a level of unpredictability that um, feels scary. And so I think that that's one of the major reasons that we discussed as a leadership team, increasing the police detail. Um, not only for the security of the building and the parts that might not be supervised, but also to make sure that we had the support um, for the comfort of the crowd.
Yeah, there, there used to be a gate that was on a hinge near where the library is in the old main office. I don't think that's there anymore because the fire department took it away because it was an illegal block of an egress. Uh, you, closing the doors, you have crash bars on one set and so those things disengage. So that gives you a manner, a means of getting out, but you have to be careful when you're putting barriers that aren't part of the fire inspection uh, up in order to cordon off a building that's not designed to be cordoned off. So anything that we do in addition to what's already there, we need to have the fire department come over and bless it or else we'll be in big trouble and we don't want to be in big trouble with the fire department.
No, I understand that. That's why I was, I was asking because I just think that's a substantial increase to the budget and you know, I think um, for me, um, I understand if you have a, a large crowd and there's some concerns about traffic or, um, but these, these are our schools, these are our parents, it's our community. So I, I think it has to be kind of a welcoming kind of thing.
Well, we have, we have to assume that they're all our parents. It's real easy and I hate to bring this up and I hate to think this way. If you have three hundred people in there, are you going to assume they're all parents or are they just taking advantage of an opportunity? I don't know.
Uh, you know, it's funny that you mentioned family fun night because I think, I could be wrong. I think there was a mass casualty event that week.
It was the night before.
Okay.
And we had several parents reach out to us with concerns about having an officer present, so, um, which is why
And I called up, I said, get a, get a cop.
Yes, because I remember not wanting to go to that event. I'm a school board member and I just was like, you know, this is making me, this makes me uncomfortable. And I think I might have been one of the people that inquired, like, are we going to have police detail there? Because yes, we want it to be welcoming, but you know what? Part of welcoming is safety. And I felt safe because there were, our police officers were there and, and yes, I, I absolutely appreciate um, the partnership between the school district and the, and the police department in this town and it makes me feel safer at a school event. I mean, traffic, you know, situations aside, which, you know, my kids went to Thornton's area and traffic's always kind of a thing there. Because it's right on the road, everybody's on the road, like, but um, the police detail for me, that I just remember specifically that night thinking, I am glad there, there's police here and I, that made me feel safer and more welcoming, quite frankly, made me feel more comfortable to even show up.
Well, and to speak to that, um, we'd actually hadn't planned to have anyone there and when I called the police department, I said, we really can use your help and you probably saw that there wasn't, it, an officer present the entire night. Um, and that was just on their shift, they, um, so if we have officers who are watching right now, I think the lieutenant that was on duty that night uh, said, hey, stop by the upper elementary and, and be visible and they were visible the whole time.
And the kids overwhelmingly see that as a positive thing. They don't see that as a scary thing in any way. They see it as oh, look, there's a, you know, police officer and the police officers are so great at building relationships with the kids and that is what we want.
They're playing basketball with our students.
They're part of making it more welcoming, in my opinion.
If they're playing basketball, we'll have to cut the rate. I'll have to talk to Paul McCally about that one.
Um, okay, so I think our next question, if I could, can I just add one more thing about Project Safeguard? I think it's may, maybe helpful to know. Um, we have been working with um, Mackenzie Murphy from the Budget Committee, um, as a J Mews alumna. Um, so Mackenzie's working on securing some spaces for us at Nashua Community College so that we might be able to have Project Safeguard there. Um, which would be a welcome, um, kind of return to how things were a while back when we used to use St. Anselms and um, in other locations, so we're hoping that that will increase the level of um, excitement for the kids and engagement for the, the families. Um, so that's an exciting collaboration that we're looking forward to. Yeah, sure. Um, police detail question about the number of events. Um, I believe we're looking at probably five events in all for us. Um, and it would be our larger events like meet and greet, open house, family fun night, um, our arts festival is pretty large. And then we have a spring concert that is very heavily attended because typically involves both grade levels. So those are the ones we were looking at. Um, okay, I think our next question may have been um, related to science supplies. Do you feel like that one was okay?
I'm assuming it's the same as the lower elementary.
It is, it is, it's the same. Um, we had supplies in general seemed to be up along those same lines.
We've talked about it, yeah.
Sure, sure. Um, I'm going to bump to can I bump all the way to the bottom, Ms. Halter? Is that okay?
Okay, I'm pretty sure the other ones have all been answered.
I think so too. So this is an important question, so um, the question was, we'd love to hear more about the need for a social emotional learning specialist and a reading interventionist. Um, are these additional positions or completely new and how will they help students succeed in school? Um, the SEL support specialist would be an additional person. Um, and that is just truly to respond to um, student needs and um, we are noticing that we need more tier two supports. Classroom teacher is typically our, our tier one, um, and then our student support team would be our tier two supports. Um, and we're noticing that our current SEL support specialist is incredibly busy throughout the day. Um, and so having an additional person to support us with um, implementation of lessons, um, even helping with peer conflicts, which are very common as the three elementaries are coming together for the first time. Um, we're managing how to, how to navigate those personality differences, so um, that was, that's the intention behind that role. And then the reading interventionist is a new position for us. Um, and that's really, um, we're noticing how effective they've been at the lower elementaries. And we do have students at our level who continue to need support in the area of reading.
And that was part of the plan. When we introduced the reading interventionist last year, we knew that there were some budget restr- you know, restraints. We decided to start it at the lower elementary and we know that that cohort of fourth graders, um, we've tried to do a lot of programming um, with them. They did not do foundations because it, foundations is a K to three program. We did try to do some core work there, but they will need um, a reading interventionist as a tier one. Um, J Mews does have a reading interventionist for um, special education, but that person's schedule is bonkers. I mean, let's just, it's back to back to back all day. So we're not talking about students that are identified and have an IEP. We're talking about what we're doing at the lower elementaries to improve um, and be able to meet the needs of students that are almost proficient. We're trying to fill gaps. So that was always part of the, of the plan to bring that position to J Mews this year.
That's, that's perfect and I like that you're addressing that gap because like, we have been talking a lot about what are we doing and we're doing it all at like the K through three level and so I'm really glad to see that we're giving some attention to the kids who maybe just missed out on all the new awesome stuff we're doing.
Okay, um, can I just, I'm sorry.
Of course.
I always have to talk when it comes to SEL, okay, because that's the job that I do someplace else. Um, I didn't eat today because I couldn't. I know I'm contractually allowed to, but how do you tell a kid who's crying? You can't, right? This is so important. When I tell you, I work in a building where it's a little different, but I, I'm an SEL and then there's a behavior person, but all emotion translates into behavior and it's all one thing that's incredibly difficult to define. And one of them wasn't in the building today and that was the issue, right? Um, kids right now are really just having a hard time and they really are needing tons of support um, to manage their emotions. Uh, I, it's, you know, probably not entirely new, kids are learning how to manage their emotions, right? But the thing that these SEL interventionists do is they preserve academic integrity within the classroom. Because the teacher doesn't have to stop what they're doing. An SEL interventionist can come in and support the teacher and the student so that teaching and learning can continue while the student gets what they need. And they're not, they don't need to get it from the teacher. They build really solid relationships with the kids in the building throughout the day. And then when they have a hard time, they can come into support so the teacher can continue to teach. And that, I think is the piece. People are like, oh, soft skills, whatever. Uh, an extra body in there allows learning to continue. And so if learning stops, you know, learning's not happening, right? If the teacher has to, you know, redirect or whatever. Teachers are masters at keeping learning happening even when they are, but to have another person present that can take over so that they can continue instruction is truly invaluable. So so much of my job, I feel as an SEL interventionist, and, and this is why I think it's so important for this district is not just to serve students, but to create an environment where learning can continue. Even when a kid is having a hard time, the kid gets what they need, but everyone else, the other kids who are fine also, nothing's being taken away from them because there's more support there. Um, so for community members who might ask, why is that needed? That is what I see in doing it every day. That is the most important thing. Hey, let me take this, you know, student, I'll work with them, I'll get them back where they need to be and nine times out of ten, I take the work with me. And I can, just because I'm working on the student one-on-one, get this, the work done with that student as well, while learning in the classroom goes on. And that is what I think I want people to know because again, trying to see academic improvements and implementing all this curriculum, we don't want learning to stop when it, when it's really going. So that's what these, it's not all about emotions. I mean, it's, it's, that's why I, these, you know, I end up interacting with the kids. But it's, it's to preserve the learning environment.
Thank you very much. And I agree, one hundred percent. That's, that's real. Okay, and I think we have a few more questions from Ms. Rothaus. Um, and I want to make sure, I believe the first one might have been about class size or projected enrollment. Feeling okay? Sure, of course. And then the next one is okay with the reading program? Okay, great. I think I got all of them. Am I missing anything? Great, I'm going to turn it over to Julie because I don't know what.
Uh, please let us know if you have any other questions.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much. Uh, this was a very long and informative, uh, and important discussion. Um, and it's the week before the holidays, so may your higher power bless you and keep you and and save you, because this is not an easy week to be a teacher. Um, we, we are so proud of everything you do and we're so thankful for everything you do. Um, and um, thank you for bringing this information to us and uh, giving us some of your time tonight.
I'm just disappointed that the ones that, that had pajama day today didn't show up in their pajamas.
Yeah, what's up with that?
Just kidding. It was pajama day for me too. My husband's like, you're changing your clothes before you go out, right?
Yeah, I just say that um, sitting before you is one of the most committed groups, dedicated groups of administrators that you're going to work with and um, this was a wonderful budget meeting because the focus of every person in this room was on meeting the needs of students and it doesn't get any better than that, no more important than that. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sure Ken.
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah. Sure. All right, uh, so we have one other agenda item tonight, uh, and that is to um, review for the second time and uh, potentially approve the revised admission of tuition and non-resident students policy. And then also the approval of revised use of physical restraint and seclusion policy. So I'm inclined to make a motion to approve both of these if there is a second.
I'm going to say so moved.
Uh, and do we open it up for discussion?
So do we have, was that a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah. All right, all those in favor of approving both the uh, admission of tuition and non-resident student policy as well as the uh, use of physical restraint and seclusion policy, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. May I ask who seconded that? Okay, oh, I thought Laurie made the motion.
I made the motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
At least I think I made the motion. Yes, I made the motion. Great. And uh well, now we move on to public comments on agenda items. If you wish to speak on any of the agenda.
I think we have new business.
Oh, that's not on my thing. I must have an old um, sorry, all right, uh board's review of capital improvement plan.
Yeah, this, this just came to your table. It wasn't in the packet beforehand, so I'm just gonna briefly go over it and then uh you know, let you have a couple of weeks to to come up with any questions or whatever. Um this is approved by the school district planning and building committee. Uh that's usually the sequence of events. We bring our capital improvement plan before them first. They give us input, criticism, uh not the knowledge that they have, and then we bring it before the board. So it's basically, you know, it's the capital improvement program. It's uh, it's, it's the the, the heavy items to keep our infrastructure um solid and what it should be. Uh first item, I'm just gonna go through twenty-four, twenty-five. First item you'll see is a roof at M E S and J M U's. Yes, we are gonna go pick a, pick on J M U's again and uh displace them for a little bit. Hopefully it'll be uh done before the end of the summertime. It's around seven hundred and seven thousand dollars. Um it includes uh sections. I think you have a map there. The sections in blue are the sections that we're talking about. We'll put this, all this stuff online so everybody can can see it. Uh you, you do notice when you, when you look down below on the chart, Tom goes and he walks every inch of roof every single year, twice a year sometimes, looking at everything that 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 we have. Just in the Master Cola complex, there's four acres of a roof up there. That's a lot of, that's a lot of roofs. And they're all in different sections according to how things were built and how additions were put on. So it's not just replacing a roof. It's around twelve different sections of roofs. And you have to do them in somewhat sequence. So he takes the, the worst ones first and we just keep going and going and going. Uh you see some of the roofs that we did last year, you see the warranty ends twenty-sixty-three. That's not a typo. That's true. We have one of those, two of those, uh three, four, five, six, seven, eight sections of roof where the warranty ends at twenty-sixty-three. That's a heck of a warranty on a roof. I will never be here before you talking about those sections of roof again, okay? And so we have other roofs that are, have, the warranty is up in twenty forty-two, et cetera. So what we do is we put on quality stuff, we hire pre-qualified contractors. We actually, actually for the, for the one that we're looking at on twenty-four, twenty-five, we have a bid opening uh sometime, I believe uh this week or next week uh to look at the bids. Uh they're all pre-qualified by the type of roof we wanna put on. And it's, it has, it usually comes with a thirty-five to forty-year warranty on it. Uh so it's, it's something that uh you, once you put it on there, you know, it's gonna stay there for a very, very, very long time and protect our, our assets. Uh the next item we have is some replacement of windows at J M U's. There's a few of them there that uh basically the metal fatigue has got to them and they need to be replaced. You will find those in Tom Toussot's budget. Uh we have Jason Pelletier with the technology infrastructure improvement part of the C I P. You know, once, once we went ahead and went to one-to-one and we all dove in with computers and every kid shall have a computer, it increased our our network, uh you know, infrastructure quite significantly and we have to make sure we keep up with that. Years ago, when we built the network, we says, oh, my gosh, now we're finished. We won't have to touch it for ten years. Couldn't be more than further from the truth. You have to stay on top of this every single year so that all the switches are up to current standards. All the bandwidth is there because the worst thing that can happen is you get staff and teachers and students reliant and dependent on this network. And if the network is not reliable, then people lose confidence and then they don't use it. And we wanna have people have confidence in this network and Jason has done a fantastic job in making sure that we have the right gear at the right time in the right place to make that happen into perpetuity. And it's something that we have to continue on. We have some H V A C mini split systems. Uh these are primarily for uh some of the buildings that we have. Um obviously, there's not a lot of air conditioning going on except for the center core of the high school, the new addition, new addition of the high school that was built in two thousand. And then, then the uh, the, the middle school. So we're putting in some, some mini splits. Uh we're gonna talk with Sarah Reinhardt uh for summer school especially, uh to where these may best serve the kids that are going to be in those rooms. Because you know, when, when it's warm out and it's summertime and everything like that and you're trying to, to hold extended year uh instruction, um the air quality and just the uh temperature of the air i- is critical to a lot of those kids. Especially those who have breathing difficulties, et cetera. So we wanna start that again. That was something we did. We started maybe like five or six years ago and then we dropped it. Now we wanna bring it back, okay? Um, the next thing we have is the high school locker room. I just put, let's study them. We wanna get an architect up there to kind of take a look at what we have for, for locker rooms in the high school. Maybe try and do a refresh, maybe put in some better ventilation, maybe try and do some things that are a more of an, not an aesthetic value, but more functional. They're, they're a little, if you go in there, they're a little bit old and tired and they need, they definitely need a refresh. Both, both the girls and boys locker room, definitely. Um then we're looking at safety, security. Bill had mentioned in the uh, in his uh opening uh budget message that we wanna talk about safety and security. These, these two items here, uh security cameras and lock sets, uh they're not in the budget. Uh we just received notice that uh we received a grant for this total to take care of these. And so we're looking towards the state to give us the money for them. Uh I had mentioned in the past that the grant opened up at ten o'clock in the morning on a Monday. And I'm there, you know, hit and enter, enter. It's nine fifty-nine. I'm hitting enter, I'm hitting enter. I'm getting nervous. Sweat's coming from my brow. I'm ready to go, you know? So we got these in on time, uh and we got approved for them. So this is awesome, around four hundred and something thousand dollars worth of money. You combine that with the other hundred and twenty we got prior with the safe school grants. That's, that's, that's some money that the taxpayers aren't going to have to pay for essential items that we need to ensure the safety of our kids, students, visitors, whoever. New security cameras, new lock sets for doors, et cetera, just to make everything nice and neat and secure. So we have that. Then lastly, you know, we have the S A U office. It's gonna be a Monday, uh meeting Monday night at the middle school library. And between the plant, school district planning and building committee and the um, I don't know what I should call it. The uh school board ad hoc committee.
So that, I think that meeting got canceled. I think this meeting that Rich is having on Wednesday night is just a regroup of the planning and building committee.
Oh, okay.
Ad hoc committee, uh he canceled till January.
I believe that's happening January sixth.
January sixth.
I could be off on that, but I think it's in January.
Okay, well, I'll be at that one and we'll have conversation. I have, I have site plans. I have drawings. I have everything, so. That would be fun.
I think that's great and, and you know, again, our hope is just to get the word out. Uh I know that um Lori and Jenna are gonna go to the um the town planning board. So again, we can just keep, you know, educating the community on this is a critical need. It's not a want. It's a critical need. And uh I know that um we've talked about this for ten years, uh saying it's a critical need for ten years, but I, you know, it, it makes me afraid when I think about people working in that basement and there's no way out. I mean, this is dangerous for our staff.
Well, you, you're correct. In two thousand thirteen, the town of Merrimack Planning Board deemed this as urgent on the C I P.
Right. And then we didn't put it back on the budget to this year. And so I, I'm glad we have someone from the budget committee here. So they can hear our urgency and how uh important it is to get this building.
But by not, when, when we put it on the, the ballot, it was a pre-manufactured building, right? And it, but it lost by sixty votes. And then we had the urgent designation by the town of Merrimack Planning Board. And that was the time to gain some traction, but we didn't gain some traction because there's other things pulling at us and tugging at us and other initiatives. And it just kind of went by the wayside. Now I think we've re- reached a point of, of, of it being kind of a critical need. It's been a critical need for a long time, but now we have the perfect spot, the old Brentwood facility.
And you have, you have the middle school bond being paid.
Middle school bond being paid.
You have a placement for it and um we have not taken care of like, you know, those buildings for ten years because we keep thinking, oh, we don't wanna invest a hundred thousand dollars into the blue building because um we're gonna tear it down. Well, it had never got ta- torn down and now you know, I'm afraid if the fire department went in, it would shut the buildings down. We would be looking to rent space.
Well, we, we did have an inspection and we are waiting for that report and that report will be uh, will be forthcoming. And we'll share it with, with, with everybody. I mean, we'll see what they have to say.
And I just have one more thing to say about the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, sure.
So um
It's your meeting, Laurie.
So uh just being on the planning and building committee for all those years, I know that in the past Matt has done a phenomenal job of hiring uh consultants to come in and look at all of our schools, all of our building needs, putting together a long-term plan. So we're never gonna get caught, well, I don't wanna say never, but we most likely will, will not get caught having a major catastrophe that we haven't planned for because we're proactive in our buildings. Our buildings are in really good shape. And um the only question I have at the end is, uh I remember in that report, there was um like freezers and some kitchen stuff. And then when Dave um did his, you know, presentation tonight, you know, he's talking about the freezers. Should that, should we have a line item for kitchen stuff in?
You know something? I never, because food service is an enterprise, is an enterprise fund, it's self-supporting and everything like that. I honestly have never thought about putting that in the C I P. However, it is a capital item and it should be in the capital. I agree with you.
Yeah, so I just was thinking it the whole time he was talking. I mean, like, I, I knew.
If it's over a hundred thousand, it goes in here and it could very well be over a hundred thousand. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. So now we move on to public comments on agenda items. Uh if you'd like to speak on any of the agenda items you heard tonight, please feel free to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record. And if you're a student, no need to state your address, just your name.
Definitely too old to be a student. I've had the robot tie, forty-five Springfield Circle. Uh first, I just wanted to echo, echo my appreciation for our food service department for the workers. They do an amazing job. Um my daughter comes home, she knows their names. She talks about them. Um so it's clear they go beyond and they try to make connection with the students. Uh my daughter loves try it Tuesdays. She came home saying she loves broccoli slaw. I did not think anyone would ever make my daughter like broccoli, but they managed to. So just hats off to them and my appreciation for the love that they put into what they do for our kids. Um I just wanted to also say as a parent, I'm really excited about the focus that um the district has had and everything that you've done Amy with our literacy and making sure that it's consistent and making sure that it aligns. As a parent, that makes me very happy, especially a parent of an elementary school um child. And I love hearing about the science curriculum aligning and how that also is going to help them with their reading foundation, the knowledge foundation, which I think will pay dividends for these students and for us as a district. And then lastly, I just wanted to say how excited I'm, I am hearing about our music program and the interest and the increase in interest that we've seen. Um Thornton's Ferry having sixty percent of their third and fourth graders in chorus is incredible. I think that's a testament to what Mr. McGinnis does. My daughter comes home and talks about him. She loves being there for chorus. She sings the songs at home, which for better or worse, it's, it's great. Um but he does such an amazing job at Thornton's Ferry and elsewhere in the district and we're very lucky to have him and I appreciate all he does. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other public comment, uh we'll close that portion of the evening. And um before we adjourn, I just wanna say um to the folks watching at home, uh we wish you a very joyful holiday season as the holidays are upon us. Um our next meeting won't be until after the new year, so we hope um everybody takes some time to uh rest and relax and enjoy the holidays. And uh we'll see you in the new year. And with that, uh do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Oh wait, do we vote on second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Have a wonderful evening. We'll see you next year.